The City Council of Kerrville comes to order. Do remember that if you're going to speak tonight, either in Citizens Forum or on one of the items on the agenda, if you will, so we can get that to the City Secretary. If you want to speak in regard to the public hearing, then you don't have to do a sign-up form. Tonight, our invocation and pledge will be led by Councilman Segerman. Let's stand.
Would you pray with me? Dear Laura, be with us tonight as we consider important issues for our city. Help us to be a positive step in making Kerrville productive, inclusive, welcoming, and a place we can all enjoy living. Thank you for our positions here on City Council, for our hard-working city staff and many others who assist us with information and support. Watch over our local and national armed forces as they keep us safe 24/7. In your son's name we pray.
Pledge?
I pledge.
We are at our time of announcements of community interest, and Mr. Coonies.
Yes, sir.
After we've had other announcements, I'm going to ask Fire Chief to come and say a little bit about that beautiful new fire truck that's out on the parking lot. Just in just a minute.
All right, thank you. And thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight on this spring break week. Spring break, there's a lot of people out of town, but our library never stops working. Laura Beckton and her group over there, again, can't say enough good things about them. They are tireless in what they put on for the city. And if anybody needs something to do for the rest of the week, these are some of the items that are going on up there. Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, we have preschool storytime. At 2:00 p.m., we're going to have a science project, and it's my understanding that superhero theme, so I may go over there and check it out. Special Lego Club is Thursday, March 14th, again, with a superhero vacation spot theme, so I think that'll be a lot of fun, too. And then on Saturday, we have local author Shirley Robertson. She'll be at the library at 2:00. She'll be talking about her new book, Two Different Worlds. She'll discuss her life growing up in war-torn London, meeting and marrying her G.I. husband during the Korean War, and then melding those two worlds together. So I imagine that will be pretty interesting. I had a recently deceased aunt who grew up in London during the Blitz, and she tells some pretty harrowing stories about just beating the Luftwaffe into the subway station. So it'll be interesting to hear Ms. Robertson. This is a one-hour presentation. It's free, and so drop on by if you want to get a chance. And then, of course, what we were talking about earlier, we have a new Sutford heavy-duty custom pumper up front, or as I call it, a fire truck.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Let Chief come up and talk about it.
Chief.
Mayor, members of council, it is beautiful, it's bright, and it's shiny, and it's free. It owns a minute, a 500-gallon tank on it, 1,500 gallons per minute it will pump. But before I say anything about the truck, I want to thank the city manager and your members of council for the support you've provided to the Fire Department in giving us the resources that we need. My fighters are pretty excited about it, and it just feels different. A lot of stuff it didn't have when I was riding the fire truck. And just to give you an idea of what it feels like, I was sitting at my computer the other day working, and it crashed on me. Called IT, they came out and said, "We got a new computer for you. You should have had a new computer a long time ago." And for the last few days, sitting there on the computer, it just feels different. But it's state-of-the-art, and with this particular vehicle, Sutford, the second one coming in is scheduled to be here in October. That will bring 60% of the Fire Department's fleet to Sutford, is what we have in service. And our garage is there, it's one of the easiest units we have in the Fire Department to work on. So guys excited about it? I'm excited because I thank you all again for what you've done for the Fire Department.
All right. Let me ask you, and the old fire truck, as Stuart said, that will be retired, it's been around 22 years?
The one that we're going to get rid of is a 20-year-old unit. We typically keep them in service, frontline service, for 15 years. This unit will replace a unit at station, at our Central Station. We'll move the Central unit out to three because Central is the busiest. That unit will have been in service for 15 years, it'll move to a reserve status for five years.
Okay. All right, I'm going to make one more comment, then we're...
Be responsible.
Okay, then we're going to move on. But one of the things about this truck is you've got all kinds of gauges and things to let you know how much water you've got left, and when you need to go hook onto the hydrant. I mean, it just looks, it's got bells and whistles.
Everything is electronic.
How fast, how fast will it go?
It's governed where it won't go in excess of 65 miles per hour.
Oh, shucks.
We try to take care of that.
Yeah, all right, all right. One more thing, then I am going to move on. And the guys will not be riding on the back, they're in the cab.
No, we actually took firefighters off the back of fire trucks in the National Fire Service, probably in the mid-'80s, late-'80s at the latest.
Mid-'80s. I'm very up to date on...
Come off of tailboards a long time ago.
Okay.
Yeah. Safety has been a priority in the National Fire Service, and one of the things we realized a long time ago is that the tailboard was just not a safe place for them.
Yeah, all right, good. Thank you.
Thank you all once again.
Chief Smith's a fine chief and has a great team he's working with. At this time, we come to the citizens...
I have one...
I'm sorry? Oh, yes, okay.
Do you want to go, Vincent?
Sure, I'll go. I don't know which one you're going to be at, but "Hi Mom, Happy Birthday, and I Love You." The other one is, "I want to thank the city manager, staff, and the Streets Department for addressing the crossing at Water and Clay during the farmer's market. We had over 280 people there last Friday, and people feel very safe crossing the street now, so please come join us every Friday at the farmer's market."
3:00.
You had 117 in the first hour?
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Record for us, but we can shoot fire.
That's great. It really is. I was there Friday also. It's just, it's a gathering place, as well as a place to get great bread and all kinds of good gifts and things. But I wanted to just follow up on the homeless real quick. I did a report on that last council meeting, and I'm continuing to follow up with Salvation Army and various other places where I can get research information. And we were able to get two different people who were, at the time, living in their car into apartments last week, right about the time we went down to 29 degrees. One of the ladies' heater had just broken in her car, so the timing was perfect. Salvation Army and a private donor actually were responsible for actually getting her into an apartment that Friday evening. And so, you know, the hope is she'll be able to continue to stay there, but she's a working citizen, she just had some unfortunate luck, so we're hoping she can manage to keep the apartment, and I will continue to monitor that. It's a small enough number now to monitor, thank goodness. We don't have so many that it's a hard job to keep up with them, and I'm tracking them through the various places that they get to go, and I'm starting to call them unsheltered citizens. I think that sounds more like their situation rather than, because they would like to have a home, it's not something that they don't want, it's just a hardship for them, so that's it. We got two people in homes last week, so...
And Mr. Mayor, if I may mention, and kind of goes along with homes, just a shout-out to Habitat. Over the past month, they broke ground for a new house and put two families in two new homes, so good deal, good deal.
Okay, Citizens Forum, remember, you're not speaking to an agenda, but you may not discuss or take any action on an item, but it may be placed on the future agenda. And the number of speakers will be limited to first 10.
We have eight.
We have eight, okay, all right.
John Harrison?
Good evening, my name is John Harrison, 2911 Dry Hollow. After the last City Council meeting, I got to thinking about all the things the city has accomplished in the past year, and I heard two of them tonight, a great turnout at the market, and also a new fire truck. But you've also got Kerrville 2050 Plan is underway. We've extended the River Trail to the Dietrich Center, getting ready to move it to the Shriner University. The TURG was established, it's going to have big impact over the next 10 to 30 years. A downtown hotel is underway. Although we experienced a significant flood last year, the city recovered quickly, and plans are underway now to try to get some of those costs back that we had to incur to fix the damage. You've got a group of citizens chartered to work on the ordinances and codes of the city, same for the city charter. New housing is going to be built out on Thompson Drive. Plans are underway. I saw in the newspaper this week, open a new street, maybe some housing, along with what's the Kerrville Independent School District. Last year, some debt was restructured to better manage the debt for the city. On and on and on, this city has accomplished a lot in the last year. How'd this all happen? Well, you all get some of the credit for it, and I think you should take a little bit of the credit. But the primary drivers, I believe, behind all of these accomplishments is the city staff. They're a dedicated group of hard-working professionals. So that really gets me to talking about what got me up to talk about tonight. I watched the video twice last week of Topic 7B. Selective enforcement was a topic, but what I was hearing was selective memory. Several of the topics that were brought up, like annexations, zoning, sidewalk variances, sign variances, had been before this council, or planning on zoning. Votes were taken, the results were not what some would like, but the majority spoke. I think it's time to move on, quit wasting time and energy revisiting the outcomes you disagree with. The most incredible allegation I heard last week from Topic 7B that was that our city staff plays favorites when interacting with the public. I don't know all of the city staff, but I do know the leadership, and I've interacted with the leadership. We are very fortunate to have very experienced staff leadership that approaches their job in a professional and no-nonsense manner. They are willing to admit when mistakes are made, change the processes, and even organizations to address those mistakes. The leadership of the staff would not put any type of favoritism, or would not accept any type of favoritism by individuals in their organization, I'm convinced of that. I think it's time for us to demonstrate through words and deeds that you support the staff. Please acknowledge that we have a dedicated, hard-working, professional working staff for this city. They do not deserve anyone casting aspirations, aspersions, or insinuating that they are not doing their job in a totally ethical manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
I've been here before, this is my second time here. And I spoke to you before, living at 1070 Bluebonnet Drive, I spoke to you before in opposition, and I'm here again to speak to you on the same matter of opposition to the possible closure of Blue Bell. I'm not here alone. I think that we have a number of others over here that feel a lot the same way. I am just vehemently opposed to changing the direction of traffic from the way it is now to adversely affect our neighborhood. I think if this is presented to people by the church, that from everybody I know in that church, I just, including my next-door neighbors, they are the greatest people in the world, no doubt. When they present something to you, it will sound better than sliced bread. But if you talk to the people that are directly affected in the neighborhood, the immediate neighborhood, not a good thing. So I stand in direct opposition to the closing of Blue Bell.
Bruce Strecky?
I didn't realize it was going to be such a busy night tonight. I saw a short agenda, and I just had met with some people this week, some local folks and some out-of-town folks who are interested in Kerrville, and they're interested in Kerrville because of 2050 and because of the zoning review that's going on, and some of the just the good vibe that's coming from the citizenry and the urban trail and the River Trail extensions and stuff like that. And I just wanted to come up, as I do from time to time, to say, you know, we have a great thing going on here, and you all and the staff are very important to that. And the one thing that I thought was funny is I'm helping one of my kids buy a house down in San Antonio. And so on Monday afternoons, I'm going down to San Antonio, and I dread it. Not that I'm helping my kids, I love that part. It's, we get down to 1604, and everybody's driving so fast and aggressively, it's just, it's very stressful to me. I'm not used to that up here. We have, you know, it's easy, right? You know, traffic's very light and easy, and I can walk across the streets and all. And I met a gentleman this week, and he had moved here from Kansas, and I asked him, I said, "What do we need in Kerrville?" And he said, "Less traffic." I was like, "What?" Well, he comes from a little town of 2,000, and he's used to driving on these straight roads along cardinal directions and not seeing another car for, you know, 20 minutes, 30 minutes. And so Kerrville has a lot of traffic in his perspective, and I thought that was really interesting. But what I got most out of it was that even folks from little towns in Kansas are moving to Kerrville, Texas, thanks to all of you. Thank you.
Bruce, Bruce, before you get away, it's me. So you're in real estate, and we want people to stay in Kerrville, but you let your kid get out? What happened?
My son, if I can proud Papa for just a second, my son convinced the Army to give him a four-year ride to the University of Texas in San Antonio. And then somehow, he convinced the Texas National Guard to teach him how to fly helicopters. So he's in his junior year down at UTSA, he's getting ready to learn how to fly helicopters, and he's married, and he has a wife who works in one of the 10 best restaurants in San Antonio, and they are looking for a house, and I'm trying to help them out. So yes, unfortunately, but I can tell you that her family lives in Harper, Texas, and when he's done with his service, they're planning to come back here.
We got healing pads here, too, right?
Thank you for asking, George. I appreciate that very much.
Okay, all right, next.
Laura Williams?
I live at 901 Blue Bell, and I'm part of the mass group here. Let you guys know that we really oppose the church closing our street. My husband just retired from the Army after 24 years, and we just bought our house last January. We're not even unfinished packing yet, and then we're told, "Oh, by the way, we're going to close your street." It's just very disheartening. We chose that house because it was a straight shot. We're just very concerned, there's lots of rumors going around back and forth. I'm one of the people who organized our official group to oppose this. We have meetings every other Friday so that we can get together, share information, share our plan for what we're doing. I don't know what else to say. We're against it. We just want to make sure that there's as many facts as possible that are presented to everybody. There's been a rumor that everybody in the neighborhood was for this. We haven't seen maybe but one or two families that are for it. Our meeting room every other Friday night is packed, full of families who oppose this. And we will continue to meet, and we will continue having families here at every City Council meeting until the church officially says that they're going to stop trying to destroy our neighborhood and our traffic flow and put our children in danger with all the other traffic going on those little small roads.
All right, one, just one question. You live on the corner, just one block up from you?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, okay, thank you.
Robbie Crocker?
I'm Robbie Crocker, and I live at 1029 Bluebonnet Drive. I'm also here about the closure of Blue Bell. I do understand that it officially has not come to you yet, but we felt that it was necessary to be here and start opposing because rumors get out, so you don't know what to believe or who to believe. We have heard that it is being presented by the church, that everyone, including the neighborhood, is in favor of it, and that they had presented this to their congregation, who is all in favor of it. But in talking to people who are members there, they were kind of blindsided by it as well. So we just want to be heard so that when it comes about, let everyone know that we are opposed to the closure of Blue Bell.
Robbie, just a question, and it kind of goes to all of you. Have you guys talked with the leadership of the church yet?
Yes, they actually, they actually had, which I thought was a nice gesture, they had a little gathering for the neighborhood, cooked hamburgers, did their presentation, and we were able to say at that meeting that we were opposed to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, I need a clarification. Three of us have asked a question or made some address after folks have talked. Is that...
You're okay, you're not deliberating, you're just asking for information, so you're okay.
Okay, all right, okay, all right.
Martha Hicks?
Well, I live at 922 Cypress, and I don't want to sound like I'm beating a horse to death, but actually, I think we are, we're optimistic that this will be, come to a good conclusion for us and for the church. The great thing about it is, we've met all our neighbors. You know, I've lived in the neighborhood for 14 years and never really talked to my next-door neighbor, Frank Johnston, you know? I think it's going to come to a good conclusion. We're all going to be happy about it. You know, I think it will come to a good conclusion. I think the church will find a good way to grow, and we're all going to be happy about it. It's going to take some time, and if they decide that Jesus is on their side, not ours, we do have a plan. We're not going to give up. We are meeting every two weeks, and we do have a plan, and we're going to be verbal about it. But I really don't think it's going to come to that, and I certainly hope it doesn't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got something I want to say. I encourage you to keep coming to council meetings, but maybe invite us to one of your meetings. I'd be happy to, too.
I'd love it for you, too. It's every other Friday, it will be...
The 22nd.
22nd.
At 7:00.
Yes, you tell them, because it's your meeting. No, yes.
I don't have the address. 720 Clay Street, Church of Christ.
I don't remember the exact number, but it's the Clay Street Church of Christ. It's 7:00. And we had it last Fri... Was it last Friday we had it?
Yeah. It's 8:36 Clay Street, the Clay Street Church of Christ.
Clay Street.
It's going to be the 22nd.
Yeah. We'd love it for anybody to come.
Okay, thank y'all.
Church members, any of you guys, anybody who'd like to come.
All right, thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Mary Ellen Summerlin?
Mary Ellen Summerlin, 105 Turnberry Circle. People still ask me from time to time whether I wish I were still on the City Council, and these days, I tell them yes, with a big smile, because you guys are doing such great work, and it would be a pleasure to be part of that. In my nearly 20 years in Kerrville, I've never seen a better outlook. I'm thinking of things like the TIRZ, the new hotel, the upgrades to the tennis center, the improvements to the parking garage, all these things just make us proud. I'm troubled, however, by a couple of things I've observed at meetings lately. One is the carping innuendos I hear from some members of the council. Some of the criticisms leveled at city staff are totally inappropriate and border unlibel except for their vagueness. If a council member is going to make a serious accusation, say of manipulation of information or any kind of unprofessional conduct against any employee of the city, I, as a citizen, expect to see evidence that there has been an approach to this problem through the normal chain of responsibility, and that at least three of you think it still needs a public airing. Otherwise, that kind of talk should be shut down immediately. You represent all of us. We expect minimum civility. The other thing I worry about is that city council members trying to operate outside the system. Now, if somebody goes to an opposing attorney in a lawsuit, as one did, that's just wrong. But whenever the city is negotiating with another entity, whether it's the county on the animal control system or the new hotel on economic incentives, you designate one person to lead that. Others make their ideas known to that one person, usually the city manager, during negotiations, and then when it's done, you vote it up or you vote it down. There's a reason for this. Personal negotiating by any one city council member is an invitation to self-dealing. It's also inefficient and confusing to the other party. The council-manager system is the one we've adopted. It's a good one, use it. Pay vigorously and then vote. Rehashing what a better idea you had after the fact just sounds like grandstanding. In fact, your office is not a place for grandstanding, period. Suspecting, as I do, that some of this behavior is motivated by the upcoming election, I just want to urge each member to consider, what is the ethical and proper use of city council meeting time? It is to get the city's business done. Have another agenda? There's soapboxes, there's corners. Go out there and harangue the public to your heart's content, but please don't electioneer at city council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roman Garcia, 934 Pecan Street. I would like to note that I am also in the opposition of the possible closure of Blue Bell Road, but I'm here to speak on a different topic. I'm here as a concerned citizen of the city, and I wasn't even planning on speaking tonight, but I noticed something actually right before the meeting. When I walked in, I was told, and so were many of us citizens here, that we had to sign up to speak before the meeting started. Before, we were told that we just had to submit a form before we got up to speak. And I have a section of the, I'll add it up right here, Section 5.1 of the Kerrville City Council Procedure Rules for Meeting states, "Comments and suggestions by the public are highly valued and encouraged during those parts of the meeting designated for public participation. Speakers should register in advance and should limit their presentations to four minutes each." It goes on to say that, you know, you have to direct your comments to City Council. Well, I'm concerned because it seems that citizens are now being restricted on when to submit their forms to speak. Someone here might not feel or have the reason to speak until maybe something is brought up that they didn't know about. And so I would like everybody in here to just think that you were in that possible situation, somebody brought up something you were probably concerned about, and because you couldn't submit, you didn't submit an agenda bill because you probably didn't have a reason to, you didn't know it was going to come up, you now can't speak your voice to City Council. If comments and suggestions are highly valued, as it states in the rule, why are we now being... being told that we need to submit the forms before the meeting? So I'd just like city council to consider allowing all citizens to speak, but as long as they submit before they speak, as is done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, could I just clarify something with the attorney, with our attorney? Is it not true that we have the ability to waive that and let you speak? Is that a power that we have here? If someone wants to speak on something they didn't know they were going to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
And in advance is the same as it was before, as far as signing up? It was just a different form. Anyway, just a point of reference.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin?
Presentations, that concludes our speakers.
Okay, all right, okay. Thank you. Now we come to a presentation, which actually I take great joy in presenting.
I would like Kerr Arts and Cultural Center and folks who are here to come, please stand here.
Well, there's some back here.
Read this proclamation. When I said it was considerable joy for me to do.
So I've enjoyed the KCC from the time it opened. I have art that I've purchased there and just a variety of showings that you have.
It's exceptional, Jim.
Okay, you agree, all right. Whereas, when the post office building located at 228 Earl Garrett Street was placed on open market with the help of James Avery and Bank of the Hills, the Kerr Arts and Cultural Center bought the building in July of 1999, took possession of the building in January 2000, and held the first show, "Images," in March 2000. And whereas the founders of the Kerr Arts and Cultural Center worked tirelessly to raise the funds and secure the volunteers to make the transformation of the iconic building into a beautiful gallery and cultural center that the entire community can take pride in. And whereas instrumental in the successful transformation of the gallery and cultural center were individuals honored during the 20th anniversary gala on February 14, 2019. The late James Avery and Grace Ayala and Yul Clanton.
Raise your hand.
Yeah, raise your hand. There you go. There you go.
Race is in South Texas. Unfortunately.
Okay, all right. Jackie Cornelius, S.J. Derby, Frank Keith, Geraldine Keith, and Mary Lee Tennant. And whereas the Kerr Arts and Cultural Center has enriched the lives of many in our community through their education programs and quality exhibitions for art, and whereas gratitude is extended to the individuals who have given their talents and resources to make the Kerr Arts and Cultural Center an important art destination in our community. Now therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, to hereby extend our sincere congratulations on your 20th anniversary year and best wishes for your continued success. Kerr Arts and Cultural Center, 20th Anniversary Year, 2019. And I have fixed my signature.
Well, we thank you very much. We bought the post office. We were just, you know, it was actually Geraldine Keith, Frank's wife, who had the guts to do it. I would never have gone and done that. People at the time were thinking that it would fall flat on our face, but actually, it worked out, and here we are 20 years later, and we, you know, have really an important place downtown. And in fact, we're just delighted that downtown is improving, but, you know, as Bruce brought out, everything is going real well, and we think we're an important part of that. So we thank you very much for this proclamation and for your continued... Kind of thing.
I'm not talking out of school, but there was a time when you desperately needed heating and air conditioning help, and when somebody told James Avery, he said, "Well, do it."
Well, yeah. Well, we went to James Avery and they asked, he asked, "How much do they want for that post office?" And we said, he said, we told him $320,000. He said, "Don't dicker, just go ahead and pay it." Because, and can you imagine? That building, $320,000 is what the city want, what the post office wanted.
It was going to be a parking garage, folks.
Yeah. So it was, you know, a great thing for downtown and a great thing for the art community here in... And we're delighted that Bob Green is now the president and that Frank became president. And, you know, it's been a succession of great leadership here in town that has made it possible. We thank you. We want you all to come. And it's amazing that people that still don't know, you know, haven't even been in there, but it's a great, great place. And we have like 15 to 20 shows a year, and a great place to bring your friends, tourists, and...
There's something, it's a great showpiece.
These are the people that rolled up their sleeves and had the vision to make it a reality. So I'm glad they could be with us.
Thank you very much. Aw, you don't want to stay for the rest of the show?
They're not being ungrateful. I just told them they could leave if they chose to, but, okay. We come to the consent agenda in which we will vote on all of these items together unless a council member wants to pull anything.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
All right.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second? All right. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda and approving it? You let it be down by the raised hand? Okay. Now, at 6:38, we go into a public hearing, and I would like for Rebecca to...
Yeah.
Yeah. If you'll read it in, Ms. McLaughlin, and then Rebecca will talk to us about it.
Ordinance Number 201906, Amending the City's Zoning Code by Changing a Portion of an Existing Plan Development District (PDD), Such Change to Remove an Approximately 23.84 Acres from the PDD, Consisting of Lots 1 and 2, Block 1, and Lots 1 and 3, and Part of Lots 2, Block 2, of the O L H subdivision, Said Subdivision Within the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas. Such Property More Commonly Known as 235, 575, 581, and 601 Peterson Farm Road. By Removing This Portion of the Property From a PDD and Placing It Within the Airport Zoning District (A.D.), Containing a Cumulative Clause, Containing a Savings and Severability Clause, Providing for a Maximum Penalty of Fine of $2,000, Ordering Publication and Providing Other Matters Relating to the Subject. And we also have a speaker, a public speaker for this.
Okay, all right. Ms. Pacini, if you'll tell us about it.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Pacini. I'm the Chief Planning Officer for the City of Kerrville. This is consideration of an ordinance to change the zoning from Plan Development District to Airport District on approximately 24-acre site. The request is consistent with Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan. The property is located in Strategic Catalyst Area 11. This area is characterized by the municipal airport. The plan envisioned that future growth will capitalize on the airport and its industrial space while keeping a careful eye on the effect of these activities on nearby neighborhoods. Current uses allowed in the Plan Development District are secondary education and elementary education. Uses allowed in the proposed airport district include business uses that are compatible with the airport, such as manufacturing, business services, retail, and restaurants and offices. Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval. I'll be available to answer any questions.
Okay. If you'll, wait just a minute.
Do you want to have the speaker first?
No.
No, okay. Rebecca, I've got a question. I'm curious, I semi-understand the why, but can you explain the why a little bit more?
The why of the zoning change?
The why, yes, putting it from the P...
The Plan Development District?
PDD, yes, into the other.
Well, the Plan Development District, the way it was adopted for Our Lady of the Hills was to establish for their uses as a school. So now they're looking at selling those properties, and they want to make them available for development. And so the compatible use in that area for zoning would be to take it to the airport district.
Okay, okay, thank you.
We have council members' comments, observations?
We have a couple of comments, Mayor. I know it stated we're only, we're doing the 24 acres, but we've only been given a plat and meets and bounds at the 7.7 acres. Can we get the rest of that in before the next meeting? In the packet, all I have is 7.7 acres.
Yes, the remaining are platted lots.
Okay.
So those already have the meets and bounds, and that's provided in the map.
Okay.
And the meets and bounds are only describing the area that's a portion of a platted lot.
Okay. And then, has the code review committee addressed this area at all? As far as what they're wanting to do with the changes of the zoning?
The code review committee has not reviewed a proposed zoning map yet.
That'd be a follow-on activity. Y'all will have a work session next Tuesday to look at the revised code as presented as a draft at this early stage. If you all agree with the language in the text, then they'll go back and produce a map. And then that map will lay out what the changes in zoning would be from existing to proposed, but we're just not there yet.
That'd be before next meeting, or is that going to, are we going to do this before that happens?
There, no, it won't be until May 9th that they do that. But the thing is, Airport District, there's one in the old code, and there's going to be one in the new code. So that one's going to be an easy match.
Okay, so there's no reason to wait for this for them?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Anything else from council?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. So, kind of dovetailing on, I mean, what he's asking about, I think, is that, was this area going to end up being airport, or was it going to end up being whatever's adjacent on the other side? You know what I'm saying? So when we're reviewing the zoning, were we looking to expand airport into this area? Or are we kind of tying our hands in, as far as being able to choose?
So we have had some level of conversation with the airport board in regards to the zoning category, not only for airport, but also adjacent land uses to the airport. And that's something we're going to be engaging with them further throughout this process over the next few months. So right now, it's not slated for anything, but it is under review.
Okay, so then the other thing I know that came up at P and Z, and I don't honestly remember what the resolution was, but part of the land uses that are available to this airport district would be like bars or cocktail lounge or whatever the heck. So how are we handling that, I guess, being near a school? What are we doing?
So the distance requirement for cocktail lounges would still be, and we would still have to review that to make sure that they're not within 300 feet of the school. And that's property line to property line.
300 feet's the only, that's the distance? So it'll be in eyesight of the...
But currently, they're budding, so the property lines would be budding, so it's property line. It's not door-to-door.
But that could get divided later, right? I mean, we're talking about big, we're talking about big sections that are going to end up getting subdivided if they're going retail, right?
I can't speak to that.
But it's a real possibility. I mean, what, there's three sections, is that right? Are there three that were carving out? And how big is each section?
If you go to page two, it'll show you the map.
Right, so how big are each one of those sections?
Well over an acre.
That's it?
Well, well over an acre.
Okay.
I would say about the piece that Vincent was talking about was about seven acres.
Okay.
And it's a total 24 acres.
And, okay, that's, that's good enough.
We have a speaker?
Bruce Stricki.
So I turned in a speaker form because I represent the applicant. And I'd like, I would like some clarification on that. In most cities I go to, if we're speaking on something that's not a public hearing or we don't represent an applicant, we don't have to turn in a speaker request form, but if we're speaking on something that's not a public hearing, then we have to turn in a form, and it is always, this is the only city I've ever been to where I can turn one in during a meeting. It's always before the meeting that if I'm speaking not at a public hearing or I don't represent the applicant. So what is the rule?
We can make it up. Council's rule is procedure rules.
Well, this is... I'm not upset about it. I just want to know what...
The rule is to fill it out beforehand, but council has discretion to allow people to speak at any time.
Got it.
That's basically it.
So as representing an applicant, should I turn in a form?
As a public hearing, just speaking, you don't need to...
No, no, public hearing, you don't have to.
Public hearing, anytime, any citizen, and I don't need one when I represent the applicant.
I don't know about that, but the public hearing you're speaking in right now, you don't need a form.
Yeah.
I'm only here as representing the applicant. Is there any questions for the applicant? I'd be glad to address your question, George.
Mike, are you okay with what has just been said?
Well, let's put this, if we're going to have a discussion about that rule and get even more specific, then we ought to put that on.
Put that off.
Yeah, okay. As, okay, as the applicant...
The sizes of the lots, would you like me to address that as a representative of the applicant?
Not so much the sizes. What is the tangible expectations of what's going to be developed in these spots? That's kind of really the question.
O L H has no plans to develop these lots. As was stated earlier, they have, they do have some plans to sell off. Three of the parcels are already platted. Two lots, one's about 4.3, the other one's about 3.9. They're together in one block of one subdivision, and then there's another, another block of the subdivision. One lot is about seven acres, and then there's the meets and bounds piece that is another 7.7 or so acres, and the whole thing adds up to about 25 acres. But O L H has no plans to develop the lots. They, as the PDD is written, elementary school, secondary school, or single-family or multifamily housing for staff, teachers, or students. And those are the only uses that are allowed on the property. So there's no commercial value as it is zoned right now. And it's interesting, when you look back at PDDs that were done back in the early 2000s, like, like the site that's where King Pan Auto was, very small site, less than two acres, that was zoned, and it's, the only thing you can do there is use car sales. Well, that's really not, you know, appropriate to have those single kinds of uses. And when we came to staff, instead of redoing the PDD, knowing that it's really better to try and fit it into regular zonings, we decided to use the A and D.
Okay, so my real question wasn't what O L H planned to do, because we already know they plan to sell it. So as the broker, I assume, is what you're going to play a role in.
Hope so.
Who are you marketing it to? That's kind of where we're going. What do you expect to buy this property?
Well, I expect people who are looking for uses along Highway 27, all but one parcel is along Highway 27, the 7.8 acres is right across from the new gravel pit. None of the property that's actually adjacent to this, except for Highway 27, is in the city right now. All the property that's adjacent to this is in the county, not in the city. So there are no adjacent zoning districts right now in their current status. So, but, you know, anybody who's looking for frontage along Highway 27, the school is very concerned about a cocktail lounge, and very likely there will be a deed restriction against that.
I was going to ask if there could be deed restrictions. Good.
So state law covers us, but there'll likely be a deed restriction as well.
Okay. Since it's a public hearing, I'm going to ask, Mary Rohr, do you want to make a comment of any kind? She is the director of the airport.
Good evening, member, Mr. Mayor, member of the city council. We've been meeting with staff on different items and questions. I had some of the similar questions that we had, and I've been... And I've been explaining that the AD is probably the best way for us to go in between, until we get our strategic catalyst area well-defined and determine what our area maps will be. This is a, this is a tool for us to get from the current zoning to the proposed 2050 plan.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? So from the airport's, airport's point of view, any concerns at all about possible uses of this?
I was most concerned, or our, our members were most concerned about the, the ability to put residential in that area. And so I guess what I understand from a meeting with staff is that the AD zone requires it to be a conditional use permit. So they are saying that this would not be a compatible use as a conditional permit if someone came in under the current AD zoning then. As we start working on our zoning for the new strategic area 11, then that would be a restricted use under AD. So in other words, that, it's kind of working its way out. We're kind of, as I said to Vincent, we're kind of in a tweener, is kind of the best I can say of what the applicant has requested and where we are within the, within the ordinance is the best that I can understand.
It is right in the flight path, right?
There's portions of it, yes.
All right.
Thank you, Mary.
Do I hear a motion in regard to this item?
I'll make a motion that we pass 2019-06 on first reading.
All right, Mr. Rudy. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Akner? All right, all in favor, let be known by the raised hand. And it passes unanimously.
Could I make a comment, Mr. Mayor? I am so pleased to see us using the 2050 plan as our guide. It seems like it comes up in every conversation now, so just a reminder how valuable that tool really is.
Exactly. We actually went out of the public hearing, 6:51. Okay, let's look at item 6A. Ms. McLehannon, if you'll read that for us.
Application to the Kerrville Economic Improvement Corporation for a project funding agreement for the design, engineering, and construction of an extension of Olympic Drive to Loop 534.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel, I'm to direct your attention to a brief PowerPoint presentation to introduce this item. Essentially, this was an element that was identified broadly within your Kerrville 2050 comprehensive plan. Under the EAS of Economic Development, item E6 says to, the city should be supporting access to infrastructure necessary to accommodate the future growth of housing and business via water, wastewater, power, communication, and roads. Certainly, some of those we, we do internally, and others are developed via our public utility partners, and sometimes private utility partners. This specific item related to the extension of Olympic Drive was also identified in the recently updated and approved master thoroughfare plan. The project consists of approximately 2,600 feet of new roadway surface and curving, extending from the existing Olympic Drive near the aquatics facility and the Singing Wind Park, down to the intersection of Loop 534 across from Tybee High School at the existing signalized intersection at that location. It also includes sidewalk extensions and pedestrian crossing enhancements, extensions of sewer service main, and the design engineering work to accomplish these elements. Total estimated cost is for both the, all of, all of those elements is 2.24 million. And the EIC request, which is before you tonight, is for 1,050,000. This is in aerial view. As you can see, this shows some of the existing infrastructure in the area. You'll see at the far bottom part of the screen, that is Singing Wind Park. You can see kind of towards the bottom left, actually the existing aquatics facility across from that is Tom Daniels Elementary. Existing roadway surface goes up that hill and then terminates at the far former of the city property, city park property. However, there's existing 80-foot right-of-way easement that goes from that location all the way down to, again, the signalized intersection at Loop 534. And then you can see Tybee High School on the far right. The city actually owns that approximate 33 acres of property there in that, indicated in yellow, the yellow triangle. Across from that property to the north, there are two, now, two pieces of property. One is the recently purchased property from KISD that was purchased from Shriner University. That 35 acres of property is slated and anticipated for the new middle school, which was passed with the community's 2018 bond approval. So they are blowing and going on that project. And again, the city does not typically construct new infrastructure in this regard, that's usually the development community. In this case, one of the developers in this area that is inducing the timing of this request is KISD. And so they will be responsible for a pro-rata share of this infrastructure. However, given that timing, and the other property owners in that area, one being the city, which is looking, as you well know, to potentially develop through private partners, the city-owned property there, that 33 acres, as well as Shriner University, which is actively marketing their property. These are elements that we wanted to go ahead and bring forward to you now to see if it made sense for the community to go ahead and put this infrastructure to help catalyze that area. This is just a very, very preliminary design element to show, you know, how the curvature of that road would work. This doesn't really show the sidewalk segments or the sewer element, but gives you just a little bit of an idea of where that's located at. This is Strategic Catalyst Area 8 along Loop 534. Certainly, one of the catalyzing effects within that corridor that was recognized is the existence of Tybee High School within that area, as well as Loop 534, certainly. And a lot of undeveloped property throughout that corridor. A large piece of it being owned by one single property owner, being Shriner University, for an endowment purpose. This is the master thoroughfare plan that was also adopted within your Kerrville 2050. You can see the zoom out on the far right does show a community-approved extension of Olympic Drive through the segment that we are talking about tonight. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, potential next steps. Should you go ahead and direct staff today to move forward? We would go ahead and bring that to the EIC for their review of the application as early as next Monday, March 18th. Based off their direction, they could potentially direct us to set a public hearing in a particular timeframe. We could be back to you in that timeframe. So again, just to talk through kind of the very basic dynamics of this, there would be essentially multiple development partners, KISD and the EIC and the city partnering to accomplish this extension across there. KISD would be responsible for their half of the roadway, their pro-rata share. And then EIC would be helping fund the city on the other element. And that is within the bounds of EIC because of the catalyzing effect for new businesses potentially within the strategic catalyst area.
Let me ask you. Even if the middle school were not gonna be there, would we see this extension of Olympic Drive to the, to the, to the loop?
I think you would. It's just a question of timing. And so I think that certainly this infrastructure is, is gonna have a catalyzing effect on that, all of that vacant property. I think the timing of this request is, is being exacerbated by, by the timing of that specific development.
Okay, what, another question. The, I'm, I'm hearing complaints about traffic. Folks say, okay, if the high school's out there, and the city does that 32, 33 acres, contracts it out for housing, including some workforce housing, you got the middle school, there's an awful lot of traffic. What do you say?
Well, we're certainly going through, all of those elements, we're going through traffic impact analysis. And there will be, you know, the most near-term development is gonna be the middle school. And the middle school will be implementing various elements to not only make signalization improvements, but also improvements along that stretch of 534, as far as turnoffs and other pieces. So I think those will all help that. But certainly, you know, traffic will increase in this area, volumes, there's no doubt about that. By further extending the, the master plan, thoroughfare plan, you, you help spread traffic out into, to other areas, so it's not all concentrated on 534.
Okay, one more question, then I'll move on to other council members, but the, if, if, okay, if, when this, when this just comes back to us, do you know if you'll have a traffic impact study?
I don't know that we will have it at that time.
Yeah, okay.
The traffic impact analysis will mostly be focused on not the improvements. Normally, roadway improvements are gonna improve traffic congestion. The traffic impact analysis that'll be conducted by KISD will be primarily concerned with improvements that they're gonna have to make to the signalized intersection, as well as to Loop 534.
Can you push them?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Other council members?
I had a question. It looks like you could use this Olympic Drive as another way to get into Singing Wind community, which takes traffic off of 534. I'm sure they'll come up with that in their analysis, but my question was the list of costs for the road. You know, I've seen those go up depending, in the time period that we're going through the EIC process. So are you comfortable that there's some room in there that it may not exceed this $2 million figure? Is there some cushion in there, at, at any point?
Within the engineer's opinion of probable cost, we've tried to be conservative with the numbers. But we, we've also tried to be, you know, accurate with the numbers that we're seeing within current bids. You know, we're hoping that, you know, this project can be designed within the next six months and then go out to bid. So like, we're not anticipating multiple years of price escalation.
Right.
Certainly, but we do have an element of contingency that is, you know, built into this project as well.
So we get the green light when we actually get the approval from EIC, okay.
That's correct.
Go to bid, rather.
Other questions?
Yes. Is, is it planned to have an entrance into, say, the back of the, of the junior high off of this extension?
Yes, there will be elements that, there will be multiple driveways that are anticipated to that campus from Olympic. Yes, absolutely. So the, the main point of exit from the campus will be directed towards the signalized intersection. And, and we've been working with the developer, with KISD, in that regard, and actually within the campus orientation, because we felt like that was the most responsible way for traffic to be flowing through that, that signalized intersection, rather than just exiting directly out onto the highway where it's not signalized, especially with young drivers in that area.
Is, can, could we envision something like Holsworth with this? Where you've got the turnoffs and that type of thing? Would that be a fair assessment? Will it be-
We are not anticipating having a landscape median in the, in the middle area like Holsworth has. The roadway section that we anticipate right now would basically be similar to what you have on the existing Olympic Drive, but where it would have two lanes of traffic, one each way, with a, a middle turn lane. That's, right now, it's unstriped that way. But we would actually anticipate striping the entirety of Olympic Drive to have that middle turn lane, which provides that driver refuse in a turning movement. We also would anticipate sidewalks along that way, because we, we do anticipate quite a bit of pedestrian traffic throughout this corridor. You've got an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school. And so we want to help make sure and facilitate that pedestrian access.
Would there be a bicycle lane?
We are exploring bicycle lane in that area. We're also exploring having more than just a standard five-foot sidewalk. Within this, we are, we're right now, within the preliminary design, looking at an actual 10-foot sidewalk, which is more similar to what our trail system is. And that provides a little bit better multi-use sidewalk for pedestrians as well as bicyclists.
Thank you.
Mr. Rudy?
Yeah, so a couple of questions. One, off the ones they were asking, so we talked about the traffic study. Is it, and you just mentioned one lane each way with a center turn. With the anticipated number of, volume of traffic coming out of those two sides of the Olympic Drive, have we looked at possibility of doing two lanes each way, instead of like what you just described?
We have not looked at it within this section because of the roadway section that is further down. We do have an 80 to 86-foot right-of-way existing. It is currently within the master thoroughfare plan labeled as a collector, so it has, it is not labeled within the arterial element. You know, something we could certainly look at, but we would then be looking at a much larger-scale project.
Okay, well, I mean, we're gonna look at a much larger-scale traffic, so we ought to at least consider it, I think. The other is that clearly, as I forget who said it, the traffic's gonna find its way back through Singing Winds. And we might ought to look at the amount of traffic that's flowing to Tom Daniels in those neighborhoods that aren't used to it. Because that's gonna be a pretty big number, because they're not gonna want to come right out and go to that light, but that's just to consider. But something the mayor asked, you know, when it comes back to us, when it comes back to us from EIC, if they approve it and it comes back to us, we're not actually gonna be approving the project yet, are we? We'd be approving just the funding. So the design of the project comes down the road, right?
Yes, sir. The, so the application that's going to EIC, if you all approve it today, would be for the, the, all of it. And then the funding agreement comes back to you for all of it. But then we still, as you said, have to bring it back to you for award of a contract for engineering services. Then once they put it out for bid, to come back to you for award of the construction of the street.
So basically, there's, there's room in that timeline to do traffic study-type stuff.
My guess is we'll have a lot of that information at some, at some point in that process.
Okay, and then a couple of other things about the funding. So if we weren't, we weren't proactively partnering, if you will, on this, the school would only be obligated to pay part of this extension anyways, right? I mean, that whole rough proportionality, so we'd, we'd be on the hook for this regardless.
The other developers of the adjacent properties would be responsible for it. So in this case, part of it is the city and part of it is Shriner University.
Right, so, I mean-
Or whoever those properties are sold to potentially in the future.
Well, I mean, ultimately, we, we couldn't hook, we couldn't strap KISD with more than their use. So we gotta figure out a way to get it. We can't force it on somebody else so it falls back to the city. So as far as EIC goes, how are we, what, what rule are we using to accommodate the EIC? Or make it allowable that EIC can fund this project, because it is, I mean, it's a road. So what are we squeezing it through?
Are you asking for the section of code?
Yeah, or, you know-
501.103, the local government code, under the parameters of project expenditures such as streets and roads, water and sewer utilities, and related improvements that are found by the EIC Board of Directors to be required for infrastructure necessary to promote new or expanded business enterprises.
Which is what? Like, what are we anticipating, the new or expanded?
All of the elements that were identified within Strategic Catalyst Area 8 of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, um, all right.
Hey, Mr. Buckland?
Uh, yeah, I think this is a great project. I wish it was done when I was at Tybee. Hopefully, it'll give kids another option to travel, that are on bike and foot. On that, I know the kayak, I'm not sure how far along they are in the survey, but they're doing a student survey. It might be nice to partner with them to see how many kids are actually walking and riding bikes to school. Also, I just might be off topic, but is there anything we can address to loop the water lines in that area? Or how's, how will the fire flow be? Is that gonna be part of this project with the school going on?
Yes, the, the high school currently meets fire flow. Fortunately, their water main construction is not a part of this project, because there are already existing water mains that have been placed within that right-of-way.
It'll hold everything that's, the development that's gonna be going on and possibly future development?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding.
And a last question, will there be any storm drainage? Were we, are we planning on any kind of drainage structure other than the street?
Our drainage elements, they're being planned predominantly on the private side within the development of the school. But there are covert elements that are part of this project as well, to make sure that there's appropriate flow within those properties.
None of it's gonna be underground necessarily, it'd just be getting under the road to the other side?
Yes, sir, predominantly. I believe that's the case. Again, this hasn't been fully designed yet. This is very preliminary.
I just want to keep that in mind for future development. We're not dumping it in areas, we're trying to keep it nice for everybody.
Yes, sir.
Can I, can I? So go ahead, you, you do-
Okay, one last question. Will there be a traffic light down at Singing Wind and Olympia?
It's not anticipated at this time. Again, that will be one of the elements that'll be looked at within the traffic impact analysis for the school.
I think probably one will be needed there.
Okay.
Just one real quick. You mentioned the sidewalk thing, just as a, an aside, or a thought, is when you're talking about neighborhoods and sidewalks, you, you don't really want to get the bikes on the sidewalk. So consider strongly figuring out a way to get a bike lane, because that's gonna be not so good. Just anyways.
We're, we're certainly looking through the street sections that were adopted within the Kerrville 2050 comprehensive plan, but yes, sir, understood on the narrower sidewalks.
Yeah. Ms. McLehannon, do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. All in favor of 6A?
Well, I'll make a motion.
Oh, yeah, I gotta have it myself.
You gotta have a motion.
We have to have a motion before we-
Well, how about I make a motion?
Somebody make, somebody make a motion.
Authorize staff to proceed.
I second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all right.
All in favor.
All in favor. All in favor. Let it be known by the raised hand, okay? All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, items for future agendas.
I've got a question. We're having a meeting next Tuesday. What time of the day do we plan on that being? I know we got some things going on that day.
It's at ten AM.
Ten AM. Is there any way we can schedule that later, or is that not possible?
It's up to the council.
Just because ten AM's early and I'd like the public to be able to attend, but that's all right if that's, if the case.
You know, it's one of those meetings where the public does not comment, so it's just council.
Okay.
And staff. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, uh, um, I got a couple, um, what did I write down? Oh, um, so thi- this got raised to me by a citizen, so to, I don't know if it's a future agenda item or a future discussion that we're having, but look into possible remedies to the, the, the dangerous sort of traffic crossings that are at, um, on Highway twenty-seven between Curville and Ingram. You know, you come out of properties, um, you're trying to make a left, and you're crossing two lanes of traffic and a turn lane, and the speed limit's fifty-five. So whether we add a light or look at adjusting, uh, speed limit or, or what, something where we can get on the rate, or I assume that's a text dot situation.
See, that's probably text dot.
But, but somehow, um, look at that if we could. And then, what? Oh, this was one, I, I think we, we pushed it out, I had to bring it up again in order to get us to consider it, but the utilizing the closed caption minutes from Granicus as, um, as a, as a minute. So, um, I guess, uh, that was it.
Okay, all right. Okay. Uh, board appointments to the zoning board of adjustment. Ms. Sigerman, would you comment on that?
Yes, on the zoning board of adjustment, I would like to recommend that we appoint Paul Zolin and Dennis Ferguson to the alternate openings on that committee.
I'll second.
Can we discuss that?
Um, yeah, we can discuss it.
Yeah, before we go-
Well, let me, let me ask, okay.
We got a motion and a second.
You made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, okay.
Um, so my, my discussion would basically be, is there, is there a particular reason? If I'm not mistaken, those are two that were new applicants after. Is it, would, do, do we give consideration to the two that were there before, that had applied, sort of, they've been in the pipeline for a while, two cycles, I guess, on this board? I, I wasn't on the team, so I, I guess I'm asking.
Yes, and-
The sense was, the sense was, both of these are very capable and would serve well.
It was really their experience, I thought, was much, much more. I don't know how else to say it. Uh, the others were, would be brand new, having no experience at all, and I do feel like this could be a very active, uh, board going forward. Someone with past experience would come in very handy. That was, I, I read the resumes for all of them, and that was my take.
What was the, 'cause I, I didn't call these people, so it'd hel- enlighten me on what the, the ones you're suggesting, what was their experience that made them?
Well, Paul has actually served on this before.
Okay.
And Dennis had approached me before, and he had originally wanted to be on the planning and zoning, and he was one of those thirteen, and he has some experience in, um, with codes and, uh, with his own business, with the co- with the business that he does. And Alan Cone and Helen Heard, neither one, I felt, had any of that. Those were our comparisons, so.
All right, um-
I just have nothing, I just, can we start attaching the applications to the agenda item, or is that something we can't do?
But we got them.
Yeah, but they're not on grant.
No, but we had them. I mean, we got all of them together.
Oh, can we not attach them? I'd like to see them attached to the agenda if that's all right.
Are we not allowed to do that?
Yeah, I think it's just, I'm not sure why we do it that way. It's always been that way, but if y'all would like to do that, I don't see why we couldn't unless, Ms. McLeannan, you have a di- different-
I'll have to check.
Okay.
Possibility, I'd like it.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion that we-
We have a motion, and we have a second.
We got a motion and a second, okay. All right, I'm tired already. Okay, um, all in favor of that motion, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay, all right, it goes unanimously. Get rid of appointment to the Senior Services Advisory Committee, and this, we have one position, uh, and this is the only, the only application that we have.
Nobody on council wants to be on it?
You what?
Does anybody on council qualify?
Hey. You're getting personal down there.
Yeah, I, I certainly, I certainly qualify.
I look forward to doing that someday.
But Sandra Yarborough-
I think you should say no more, mister.
Right. Uh, Sandra Yarborough was here for thirty-four years on the city staff, and a very capable individual, and I think she'd serve well.
I move that we appoint Sandra Yarborough to the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by the raised hand, okay. Okay, executive session, Ms. Brody.
Oh. Yeah, um, sort of in honor of the, uh, the articles that coincidentally got put in the paper today, I got no problem having this as a, kind of an open discussion. I don't really, I'm, I don't see the need for what I'm, what I'm, what the discussion's about, I don't see a need really to go in, do executive session, and, uh, so, i- if you don't mind, we just-
Can you give us a hint on what we're discussing?
Well, basically, all it is, is, um, it's really, I didn't plan it, but that Daily Times, um, article is really what it's about. I had no idea that, that coincidentally, this is like, um, Public Information Week, or gov- Transparency in Government, or something like that. Sunshine Week, I guess is what they call it. And really, all it is, is, we all, at some point or other, have, you know, to Ms. Summerlin's claim, um, grandstanding on the idea of transparency, and so the only law we have, or not the only one, but one of the biggest laws we have in Texas is the Open Meetings Act as far as transparency. And so through some of the stuff we've done on council, it, I, I think it would be good for us to, um, sort of review some of it, um, similar to how we reviewed the, um, the ethics stuff a way back, and just kinda go through a couple of just examples, if you will, of where we might wanna be a little more careful and transparent. And so if you, if you don't mind, I'll just go through-
But would this not be something that maybe we could do in a workshop better than here?
No, 'cause it doesn't take that long.
Well, let me, let me add something too, with all due respect to Councilmember Brody. It doesn't say that. It says, it contemplates an executive session item under this section, has no mention of open meetings or transparency in government. So I would suggest you, no, I, I would suggest you, um, um, you know, put it on an agenda, whether it's a workshop or the next meeting-
Read the agenda item to me.
Executive session allowable under five five one oh seven one, consultation with attorney, regarding pending or contemplated, uh, litigation, discussion concerning Curville City Council and the Texas Open Meetings Act. But you read that all together, and it looks like there's some sort of pending litigation against council, so I'm asking you, I think it's more appropriate to, to capture what y- you're now wanting to talk about and put it on another meeting.
Can I explain, uh, what I actually gave to Mr. McDaniel right now and explain to you that there was no pending, and I explained that to him? It was really, honestly-
Wait, 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 this is not on the agenda.
It is on the agenda, sir.
Uh, as an executive session?
No, now wait.
This is not an executive session.
Now, hang on one second. The, the agenda item is, is on the agenda to talk about Curville City Council and the Texas Open Meetings Act. It is allowable under five five one oh seven one to go into executive session, but that doesn't mean you have to go into executive session.
And so, council can, sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Council can decide. My advice is to put it on another agenda because I don't think it captures exactly where you're going now. Um, I also believe that, well, I, I know, that oh seven one contemplates consultation with attorney, whether I give you all the legal advice, or you provide information to me so that I can turn around and give you legal advice. I don't think that's where you're intending this discussion to go anymore, so I'm, I'm, my recommendation to council as a whole is to have Mr. Brody resubmit this and talk about kind of the broader scope that he wants to talk about.
I, tell me this, 'cause that's actually not at all what I gave to Mark to put on the agenda, and what I said when I suggested the one as a possible way to go in.
I, I think we have captured exactly what you submitted in an email.
Curville City Council and the Texas Open Meetings Act, that's what I put as the agenda item. Now, I'm not really sure all the rest of it, how that's not on the agenda right now. I'm still talking, that's all I'd be talking about, Curville City Council and Texas Open Meetings Act.
Mr. Mayor, I just feel that, that, uh, this is, it's very confusing.
Okay, I, I will, I will, I will just do this. I will go ahead and not argue the point with y'all, but I will say this right now. This is precisely the problem with what's going on in a lot of other places. Basically, I was very clear, it wasn't confusing, the agenda item is clear, and I requested to speak about that agenda item, and to take it off right now is just a further example of what is going on, where basically we are being shut down. Same thing would happen with that special meeting, we're not gonna discuss it, but that's what's going on. So I won't fight with y'all on it, but I'm, uh, that's the statement, and it's just another example of it.
But I wasn't clear, I mean-
I was, and I put it on there, and I knew what we were gonna discuss. That's really what matters.
I don't think it was clear.
I don't, I don't think we're gonna get anywhere with any further discussion, so, uh-
Of course not.
I would say at seven twenty-two, the meeting is adjourned.